Good morning. If you would all please rise.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Heavenly Father, we beseech your divine guidance in this meeting. Keep us ever mindful of our obligation. Grant us, dear Lord, wisdom, tolerance, and courage that we may well serve our county and fulfill our trust. Amen.
I'd like to make the motion to approve the minutes of October 24th.
Second.
Discussion? Roll.
Hambley.
Yes.
Harrison.
Yes.
Sweating.
Yes. Okay, we are going to go out of order here, and we are going to go right to our proclamation presentation because we see we have a lot of guests here for that. So, the Board of County Commissioners of Medina County are supporting Operation Green Light for veterans. The residents of Medina County have great respect, admiration, and the utmost gratitude for all men and women who have selflessly served our county and this community in the armed forces. The contributions and sacrifices of those who served in the armed forces have been vital in maintaining the freedoms and way of life enjoyed by our citizens. Medina County seeks to honor individuals who have made countless sacrifices for freedom by placing themselves in harm's way for the good of all. Veterans continue to serve our community in the American Legion and Vets, Disabled American Veterans, Vietnam Veterans of America, Marine Corps League, veterans of foreign wars, religious groups, civil service, and by functioning as county veteran service officers to help fellow former service members access more than $100 million in federal health, disability, and compensation benefits each year. Approximately 200,000 service members transition to civilian communities annually. An estimated 20% increase of service members will transition to civilian life in the near future. Studies indicate that 44% to 72% of service members experience high levels of stress during transition from military to civilian life. Active military service members transitioning from military service are at a high risk for suicide during their first year after military service. Medina County appreciates the sacrifices of our United States military personnel and believes specific recognition should be granted. Now therefore be it resolved with designation as Green Light for Veterans that the Board of Medina County Commissioners hereby declares from November 1st through Veterans Day, November 11th, 2023, "A time to salute and honor the service and sacrifices of our men and women in uniform transitioning from active service." Be it further resolved that in observance of Operation Green Light, Medina County encourages its citizens in patriotic tradition to recognize the importance of honoring all those who made immeasurable sacrifices to preserve freedom by displaying green lights in a window of their place of business or residence from November 1st through Veterans Day, November 11th, 2023. So, we have some people here. We'd like to come on up and honor, maybe somebody say- Somebody say a few words. We should get a picture of just the vets or some- yeah, yeah. Come on up. We need a picture of the vets and then-
Oh, come on, you guys, why don't you come up too?
You guys in the front.
Hold it up high.
You guys in the front.
See now?
No, a full moment. Come on, Steve. We're so glad to have you all. If you want to say a few words.
So, first of all, I want to say thank you to the county for recognizing this. I want to say thank you to this young man over here, Stephen, our maintenance director, who's going to turn the courthouse green tomorrow night, and it'll be green through Veterans Day on November 11th. You know, most of us think when we're transitioning out of the military, people always think of the combat veteran that's come back from war and how they, you know, reintegrate back into civilian society. But the truth is, is just someone that went off and served and did three or four years in the military somewhere. Coming home can be a different experience, you know? Moving is the number two stressor for anybody next to the death of a family member. So, you know, bringing your family home, or whether you're coming home by yourself, the expectations that your family has for you and the expectations that you have for yourself to reintegrate back into society, and of course, dealing with civilians, as we all say in the military world, can be challenging for some people. So, I want you to remember that. Think about the veterans that come home and how they've served our nation and how they continue to serve our community back here, okay? Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you all for coming. Okay. Next, we have an annexation review dated October 31st, 2023. An expedited type 2, 61.4450 acres from Wadsworth Township to City of Wadsworth, filed with Commissioner's Office, 92123. So, we have the resolution here. A resolution approving the petition for expedited type 2 annexation of 61.4450 acres of land known as being part of Wadsworth Township to the City of Wadsworth, Medina, Ohio. The Commissioner's job is to review the annexation. No public hearing is required. As our clerk, Rhonda Bach, have the following conditions been met? Was the petition properly filed?
Yes.
Is territory proposed to be annexed contiguous to the municipality?
Yes.
Does the petition contain the signatures of all property owners within the territory to be annexed and obtain no more than 180 days before the date the petition was filed?
Yes.
Was an accurate legal description of the perimeter and accurate map filed?
Yes.
Was a list of adjacent tracts, lots, and parcels, including names and mailing address of the owners submitted?
Yes.
Did the City of Wadsworth file a resolution stating that services will be provided and an approximate date for services?
Yes.
Did Wadsworth Township and the City of Wadsworth consent to the annexation?
Wadsworth Township filed an objection based on insufficient information with the preference of the Board of Commissioners to determine whether the conditions had been met.
Okay. The Commissioners have reviewed the checklist of submission requirements and have determined that the application and attachments are in order. Under the annexation law, this will not result in the area being annexed to the detached from Wadsworth Township. I will now open the floor to comment. Steve, did you have any comments?
Just that we had received the resolution from the Township Trustees and appreciate your indication to us that we need to review it, in which case we did. We did seek legal counsel regarding one of the issues of the creation of an island and the interpretation of the statute regarding annexation that the annexation will not create an unincorporated area of the township that is completely surrounded by the territory proposed for annexation. My interpretation was that that's talking about creating an island. We did have them review the statute as well as Supreme Court cases, and it seems clear enough that even though an island is being created, the annexation itself is not, the island is not within that annexed territory, in which case then, obviously, it just implies with that statement. We also did take the opportunity to review the other portions of the complaint. I would be interested in hearing, I don't know, the other board members from-
Sure.
I know we've got representatives from the township afterwards.
Yeah, see if Ant here has any comments first.
No, but I would be interested in hearing as well.
Is there anybody else who would like to speak? Come on up. Name and address, please.
Sean Bauscher, Wadsworth Township, resident.
The issue at hand is not about the annexation. Annexations are great. The type 2 annexation, super. I believe in it. This property needs to be annexed as a type 2 annexation. Township gets revenue, city gets revenue. It's great.
Okay.
The issue that's at hand is the transition and buffering zone. What we have right now, the City of Wadsworth and their plan for annexation discusses a smooth transition from high density to low density. They even call out the Reimer Road and the Hartman Road corridors, which is specifically what we're addressing right now in their plans. They are not adhering to what they said that they were anticipating in their comprehensive plan and their policy for density transitions. Most recently, on the Reimer Road properties, which is not part of this, but it's adjacent in the same quadrant, they were talking about two to four houses on Reimer Road, single-family homes. We have now 88 units and currently 42 more units of redwood kind of apartment complexes going in. So, basically, in the city's, page 1 of the city's long-term planning, it is, if an annexation petition is approved, care should be taken that the site development process to create buffers between high-density and intensity uses that could occur in the city and lower in density and intensity uses in the adjacent property of township. Buffers may include natural or physical improvements such as open spaces, public parks, hedgerows, tree lines, et cetera. Creation of new step-down or transitional zoning districts that allow for the density intensities that are less than what is allowed in the current city but more than in the township should be permitted. But are higher than that that is permitted in the adjacent townships. Now, during our comprehensive plan that we had back in 2007, and we've reviewed in 2010, 2015, we, the original, on the steering committee, we had Steve, Chris Easton, the city. We asked the city to come in, how are we going to transition here? And they gave their blessing. Basically, we looked at the Haynes Farm in the back, which was, and if you look at, I've got a map, which we had commercial and higher density, which is adjacent to 76. But then we had a transition into that property. If water and sewer were centralized, I should say, if centralized water and centralized sewer were available, we could have, we allowed for .75 acre lots. As of 2004, the city no longer provides water to the township. That was under an administration change that came in Caesar. He allowed, we have sections of the township that have city water and city sewer, but as of 2004, that came to an end. No water. Okay, so, even though the city talks about creating transitions, they don't allow us to make those smaller transitions.
So, can I ask a question?
Go ahead.
The plan that you're referring to, is that the city's plan?
This is the city's plan.
Okay, okay.
This is the city's annexation policy, which they are not following, because once they started developing Reimer Road, on the Reimer Road, let me grab my other notes here, because I got the case to do some on that for you. On the Reimer Road property. Oh, and the Reimer Road property on page, page 3, step-down transitions, they specifically call out that two to four dwelling acres stated, I'm sorry here, guys.
Well, can I ask you another question?
Yeah.
So, have you had discussions with the city related to your concerns about their, the annexation policy?
Not since, no. What happens, we got sort of blindsided with the Lewis property, which is directly across from the Reimer Road-
Right.
-property, which also became the type 2 annexation. Okay, and we agreed with that. And we kept talking about, hey, what's going on with the buffer zone? All of a sudden, the zoning goes through. It's like, well, who got informed about the zoning? Who knew about this meeting? And unfortunately, as a state legislator at one time, I don't know why we have to keep putting things in newspapers, because who gets newspapers? It needs to be on, there's something a legislator could change.
Actually, there is a new law starting in October that they can be published on the-
On the website.
Yes, yes.
And that would be more applicable, because we missed that. And it's like, okay, well, nobody's here, so we're going to have this high density, so what's the buffer zone?
The municipality has to opt into that, but if they've opted into that, they can notify them.
So, as I understand, the type 2, there's no written agreement between the city and the township officials regarding the future development of those properties.
It's been in conversation for years.
But there's nothing, nothing is part of the agreement.
That's correct.
And nothing that we would even be able to have, as I understand the conditions of the statute, that we could actually attach to. In other words, we, as I understand, the Board of Commissioners can only apply the conditions that are in the statute. We can't add other conditions other than what the township and the city have agreed separately. And that is one, it appears that the, I guess, the city has not been willing to enter an agreement with the township regarding those development issues?
They never approached us to follow up on Robert Engler, Wadsworth Township trustee. I don't want to repeat what Sean has said, but this buffering thing is the main issue.
Sure.
We don't know what we're buffering to.
Got it, yeah.
The city obviously knows, the developer knows. You don't go into the City of Wadsworth without having a plan on what they're going to do with that 64 acres. We just want our citizens, our residents, to know that they're not going to end up with a project like turned out at Brookside Country Club, where you have a house, a house, a house. We want some definition as to what's going on. They won't relieve that, release that information. So, once you approve the annexation, we're out. They can change their zoning, they can do whatever they want. So, all we want to do is protect our citizens so we don't end up with a development with a buffer zone being a tree, a fence, a walkway. We want something realistically with density separation. So, our two-acre parcels in the township, which people move into the township because they want more land, all of a sudden, they have a development next to them that's got seven or eight houses per acre. I don't know if you've noticed what happened at Brookside, even in the Sharon Center development. I call it the Blooming Acres development. I drove through that allotment about a year ago looking for a friend. I got lost in there. There are so many streets and cul-de-sac. So, the density there is high. I mean, there are 400,000 and 500,000 dollar houses, but still, okay, I'm sorry.
But this, I guess, as it clear, the city has exclusive control over the zoning and development conditions of that property after the annexation. The township actually has no legal authority or standing with respect to those considerations, other than the public input, of course.
Yeah, and our protection for our residents is gone at that point.
Right.
And that's why we need the protection of the Commissioners to make sure that development is done properly. And there again, we have no what's a buffering zone.
And our review of, you know, based on the statutory conditions, and this isn't, even though this is, this is an expedited annexation unlike-
And we're fine with that.
Unlike the contested one that we did earlier this year with Brunswick, which created some similar issues in that, you know, arguments were made by the township in that case that you, well, I'll speak for myself, that I looked at and I was very sympathetic to as a township resident myself. But the statute gives us a very limited discretion and authority in kind of checking the box on the elements, and that's-
That's our only protection is the Commissioners answer the annexation is done. We need the type 2 annexation. We need the financial stability in the future. So, we still have to protect our residents. We have 4,500 residents in the township. We need to protect their interests, but we also need to protect the financial interests of the township. So, we do need to, as Sean said, we do need the type 2 annexation. That's necessary.
Well, I absolutely agree with your concerns. That makes sense to me in terms of communities, as the future development and the purpose of the annexations are clear for future development. But absent an agreement, and we are limited in how the town, actually, how the county Commissioners can protect your interest or those residents, because the statutes actually direct us in this review. If it meets these conditions, we have to pass the resolution. That's my understanding.
And really, the annexation process wouldn't be the process by which that, those protections would be afforded. I do think, and maybe you've kind of touched on it there, some kind of collaboration between the township and the city probably goes a lot further than anything we can do once it gets up to us for review.
Especially expedited.
Right, well, but the city's going on with their own policy. Basically, I was, I was here. Along Reimer Road, potential uses should be primary, single-family homes, freestanding condos, and a density not to exceed four dwellings per acre. And that's their own statements. And that's not what they're doing. They're not adhering to their own policy. So, hey, we're going to annex into that, we want this. We're going by your policy, but we end up with this, which is a, this is the proposed area that's being annexed, in that little square. So, what we have is multiple, high-density right against this. And that's not what we're looking for. We're looking for what the city is saying that they want to do.
Well, let-
And I understand, I understand.
No, no, I was going to ask you, when was that policy adopted?
2015.
2015.
By the city.
And at this point in time, their council's certainly changed since then in some regards, and, yeah.
Yeah. We have some other incidents in the city that the annexations, they haven't been forthcoming with what's happened. I can give you a couple examples real quickly. About four, five, six years ago, a church annexed some property on the south side of Interstate 76. When the city did the annexation, people don't know that our township line goes right down the center of I-76. Rather than the city annexing to that point, they annexed to the side of the road, to the right-of-way, and that left the responsibility to the highway on the township. We pay the City of Wadsworth $500,000 a year for fire and EMS protection. Chief Linder and Matt Hissack do a great job. I'm not complaining about that. But I think that was done intentionally by the city with current administration, basically. I've discussed things like that with Mayor Bla-Bla. Just real quickly, go way back. The corridor down Route 57 from basically I-76 to Seville Road, this is my gimmick. My nemesis, I've been a trustee for, I'm in my third term. That corridor is an ODOT right-of-way. When the city, when they built that road, they came in and the city annexed the east side of that property right up to the right-of-way for commercial or residential and, I think, light commercial. They came right up to the right-of-way and stopped. On the west side of 57, they came right up to the corridor for their industrial annexation. They stopped at both sides and left the responsibility of the Route 57 corridor in our responsibility. We don't maintain it. It's all ODOT maintains. And I think years ago, whenever that happened, that was done intentionally. I'm leery of what we can get out of the city in the future if this annexation is taken. Now, I got to say, in this annexation, they did take the annexation across the highway, so there's a certain part of 76 now that's going to be the city's responsibility for fire EMS protection. So, that'll take it off our hands. I guarantee you, they won't deduct our 500,000 either.
Mike or Brian, did you have anything to say on this issue?
Well, I'd like to see if you have any questions. Have you had to answer any questions?
Was there anybody else that wanted to speak on this issue?
Brian, you're here essentially on behalf of the county?
Yeah, yes.
And, I mean, I, you know, just want to make sure that Steve and I aren't talking out of turn up here. There really isn't any basis for us to factor in the city's compliance or lack of compliance with the plan into the analysis we have to do today?
I would agree with you. I mean, as much as I sympathize if they meet the factors that are outlined in 709023, I think the Board realistically has to.
Yes.
Is there, are there any ongoing discussions between the township and the city related to-
At this point, Jim Gardner is one of our other trustees. We have not heard anything. We didn't know about this meeting until Sean, who is our zoning officer, he's here as a private citizen today. But we found out about this meeting. We did have the paperwork in an office, and you know how that goes by. Sean happened to get as a adjoining property owner. That's how we actually found out about this meeting and talked to Mr. Lyons about where we could at least make our opinions known about the annexation.
Brian, maybe if you wouldn't mind coming up here, I do have a question. Yeah, which might-
Thank you so much.
That way, the audience, people are watching.
Those are yours. I didn't talk about the coal mines. But the mines are growing, and that's showing. The other mines that they've done, other boring drills on and have found out they basically are doubled in size of what they thought they were. So, there's a concern about that also, but that's-
That's on the developer.
Okay.
As long as the state, I just wanted to go on record on that one, saying if the developers, if mine subsidence, which we know we have in the area, because we had mine subsidence a mile away by Home Depot, that the state of Ohio should not be required to support fixing those homes that collapse. I wanted on record saying that there are mines, there's recorded mine subsidence in the area, and that the builder, whoever it be, is aware that there is a potential for mine clappage and that it is not the responsibility of Ohio citizens for you to make millions of dollars on your development, and I'm a developer too.
Well, there is an insurance program that-
Oh, yeah, I know, yeah, for $10 a month. I pay $10 a month on mine.
Right, okay.
That's it. Thank you for your time, sir.
So, my question, Brian, if you wouldn't mind, I just want to put on record that if, that the township, am I correct in saying that a township and the city can enter an agreement when it comes to annexed properties as to how they're going to be developed? Once they get annexed to a community? It's part of the conditions?
It's part of the conditions. You can't put conditions on it.
We can't, but the two parties can. Is that correct?
I believe there's another type of annexation where they could enter into an agreement, not necessarily the type 2 annexation that they are, that is the subject of this annexation here.
Right, but with a type 2, they couldn't have that kind of, what's a, side agreement as to the development?
I suppose they could talk about anything that they want.
Sure, okay.
But I don't, you know, and they could agree to, you know, whatever they want to do. But the annexation is the annexation. If they meet the factors, they're only, the only thing that the township could object to is that the annexation doesn't meet the factors under 709023. Otherwise, you have to grant it, and they have, you know, they did talk about, I heard you talking about the buffer zone. We weren't here for the whole thing.
Oh, right, yes, okay.
But they already put that in their resolution, so they provided for something like that.
Right.
And if the Board determines that the annexation meets these factors, you really have no choice.
Okay.
They could always talk about an agreement, I suppose, but-
Sure.
That would be goodwill on between the township and the city.
So, there is another expedited where the two parties can enter an agreement prior to-
I believe that's a type 1. Is that what?
I was generally contemplating a tax-sharing agreement.
Correct, okay.
And I've not seen a situation where township and municipality agree on the zoning or development.
Okay, okay, all right.
So, I'm not familiar with a situation where that's been done.
Okay.
In this situation, the trustees were, had not seen the resolution from the city when they submitted their objection. And the one element that's required in the statute is that the city include in their resolution a statement that they will provide a buffer if the zoning, that they impose on the property is incompatible with the adjoining properties in the township. I would also add that property owners are given the right to enforce that under the statute. So, it's, that's included in the annexation statute, that if adjoining property owners are not satisfied with the buffer that the city provides, there's a private action authorized on behalf of the property owners that are adjacent to the property.
Okay.
Or in the township.
And I would think one of those, one of their arguments would be based on the agreement, or the city-
The resolution.
Yeah, the resolution, but also the city's document that was referenced earlier. But, so I'm saying that could be part of the complaint that would be filed by the, but, which is all beyond the scope of kind of our analysis.
It's beyond our control, but it is part of the ability of the adjoining property owners to have standing.
And they're-
To be able to-
Yeah, but what agreement are you talking about? Some prior agreement even before this?
Both the city's resolution and whatever other policies the city has. But again, it makes me feel a little bit better, not, not great, but a little bit better to know that the annexation, you know, once approved, there still is standing for property owners who are affected by the decisions. Is that kind of what we're hearing?
I would say, you look at the structure of the statute and the protections in the statute- and the protections in the statute really put it all in the city's hands. It doesn't really, once it's annexed, the township isn't really the party in interest. It's the property owners.
The property owners.
Adjacent property owners in the township, though, could potentially-
They would have some legal right to enforce the responsibility of the city to provide a buffer. But, and it's anybody's guess as to the significance of that right and how it's, how, what kind of buffer the courts would determine is adequate.
Right.
That's a whole different issue, but that's not, that's not-
Beyond the scope of our analysis.
Right, okay.
That's what the statute provides.
Yep.
So the statute provides a mechanism-
None of which, none of which is going away by any action we take today.
Right. It doesn't really give either the township or the county commissioners-
Right.
-the ability to intervene in that process.
Yep, understand.
And then buffer is a broad term, because they define it in the statute. They define buffer in the statute, so.
Okay.
Lady in the back row had a question?
Yes. The adjacent property owners, legally, we have a standing. What would we have to do? Hire lawyers and, I mean, what, what protection do we have? We have two acres. We hoped the street would be developed in the same-sized lots as the whole street is. This is a shock, and we were blindsided too.
Can I make one other comment? The city already has on their city council agenda to approve sewer and water to this project.
Right.
So they're planning on moving forward this, with this project. Our concern, basically, go back to what I said in the beginning. We needed protection for our residents, just as the lady said, somewhere, and if it's the legal process after the fact, to make sure they're following up on their, when'd you say, 2011?
2015 city watch with annexation policy.
But then again, we don't want to burden our residents with a big legal fee. And everybody says, I kind of have a negative attitude toward this because I feel that most annexations go to the way of the city, whether it be Wadsworth, Brunswick, you mentioned Brunswick. So if we're fighting a losing battle, we just want to protect ourselves as much as we can. Like I say, the city's already moving forward this project. When they're supplying sewer and water to this project, obviously, the city knows what they need. That developer has already gone to the city. If you know City of Wadsworth, engineering and planning and zoning, they know exactly how many condos, how many houses, how many group homes, whatever it's going to be. The city knows how many bedrooms are going to be in that development. They know exactly how much sewer and water they need to supply before the fact of the council voting on that. So that's already in their works. So they're planning on moving forward.
I, and I am sympathetic and understand the concerns from the township. I do remind, mindful that actually, there's three parties. There's the township, there's the city, and then there's the property owner. And actually, the bias is more in favor of the property owner. At this point, it is the petitioner, the property owner, that has indicated that they want to, and it is their interest, that the law kind of provides, I guess, a dominant interest here in the process. And that's the way the annexation law's been interpreted for decades. So I think in this case, we are confined as to what we consider. I am absolutely, I agree with you, and I am sympathetic. If I was living right next door to it, I'd have the same doggone concerns of the lack of following their policy in terms of buffer and what it's actually going to include. But the question comes now, what legally we're obligated to do?
Well, we can't even become a, if we wanted to incorporate as a township, we're not allowed to. So we're at the city's mercy. We're, I mean, 1993, the state took that right away from us. The city says, yeah, you can become a village or no. We want to consume you, and we want to do whatever we want with you. That's what basically government taking, I'm looking at. But then that's, that's important.
Thirty years ago.
Yeah, I know, thirty. But right now, we have, we have no way of-
I understand.
Look, we talked, oh, I did. I was talking with Sharon Center in regards to, if you become a village, can we break this off and annex off and break off? Cop, like some of the trustees in copy also. What if we break off this, just a little section of it? Because that's, just trying to salvage what we've got because the city is just, they're ruthless. They've cut off any water, they've cut, they're not following their plans. All they're doing is going for the mighty dollar. They're really not really concerned, it seems to be, with the quality of life that we currently have.
Mike or Brian, did you have anything else you wanted to say?
No. Unless you have more questions for us.
Thank you for answering.
Again, to reiterate, as far, from the commissioner's perspective on the expedited type-two, there is a checklist that we have to follow, and if it is in compliance legally... Yeah, okay.
So which case?
Thank you for your time.
Sure.
You're very welcome.
I will make a motion to approve the resolution.
Second.
Any further discussion?
I just, I guess, I mean, it's, a lot's been said.
Yes.
And I do, I want to echo, you know, kind of the sympathetic, reluctant approval of it, just like the last one. If there are things that townships and municipalities can do, thank you, to avoid the annexations in the first place, you know, those are, there are some tools there. I know that may or may not be an issue here, but ultimately, this does come down to the rights of, you know, the property owners, as Steve mentioned, and our statutory responsibility. So that's my only additional comment.
Okay, roll.
Hambley?
Yes.
Harrison?
Yes.
Sweattick?
Yes.
Yes, thank you. I appreciate you coming, putting on the record.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming very much. Okay, next, we have resolutions. And I see we have Dan Becker here from the County Engineers' Office.
Morning.
Morning.
We have three resolutions for your consideration today. The first resolution is authorizing the Medina County engineer to purchase two new model-year Western Star cab and chassis. The second resolution is determining the necessity for equipment that's used by the Medina County engineer to be considered excess and be disposed of. And the third resolution is authorizing the Medina County engineer to purchase one new model-year half-ton four-by-four pickup.
Sure. Move to approve the three resolutions.
Second.
Discussion, roll.
Hambley?
Yes.
Harrison?
Yes.
Sweattick?
Yes. Thank you so much, Dan.
Happy Halloween.
Next up, we have Jeremy Cinco, sanitary engineer.
Morning, everyone.
Morning.
Three resolutions for consideration today. The first is authorizing the sanitary engineer to obtain an easement for 560 South Court Street. The second is amending a professional design service agreement with Jones and Henry Engineers for the Medina Road, State Route 18 sanitary sewer improvement project. And the third is authorizing the sanitary engineer to enter into agreement with Hazen and Sawyer for professional design services for the Chippewa wastewater treatment plant project.
Move to approve the three resolutions.
Second.
Discussion, roll.
Hambley?
Yes.
Harrison?
Yes.
Sweattick?
Yes. Thank you so much. Next, we have Holly Miran, our human resources director.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I also have three resolutions. It must be popular today.
There's three, miss.
On our personal changes resolution today, we have two new hires, one at Job and Family Services and one in Commissioners. Our start date correction at Job and Family Services, a resignation rescinded and position change at Job and Family Services. Five rate increases, one in sanitary, two in building, one in print shop, and one in transit. One promotion in sanitary, one change in rate in sanitary. Two leave of absence in transit and one resignation at Job and Family Services. Second resolution is authorizing the employee health plan funding rates for 2024. And the third resolution is accepting and awarding proposals for workers' compensation. Self-insured third-party administration services for Medina County Human Resources.
Move to approve the three resolutions.
Second.
Discussion, roll.
Hambley?
Yes.
Harrison?
Yes.
Sweattick?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Holly.
Next up, we have Brett Thomas, our finance director.
Who will have more than three resolutions. Don't break our trend.
All right. All right, well, in honor of Halloween, eight, eight resolutions. All right, our first resolution is amending the appropriation measures. Our second resolution is the transfer of appropriations. Our third resolution is expenditure adjustments for various funds. We do have a small typo on the second one there. That shouldn't both be negative. One of those is a positive.
Okay.
Our fourth resolution is revenue adjustments for various funds. Fifth resolution is purchasing 6,800 gallons of gasoline. As usual, Port's Petroleum, our good friends there, have come in with their lowest price of $233.5 per gallon. Our sixth resolution is expenses for the county engineer on just conferences. Our seventh resolution is expenses of other county officials, also conferences. And finally, our eighth resolution is our weekly bills in the amount of $1,109,091.93. As always, copies of the weekly bills are kept in the auditor's office for your perusal.
Move to approve the eight resolutions.
Second.
Discussion, roll.
Hambley?
Yes.
Harrison?
Yes.
Sweattick?
Yes.
Thank you, Brett.
Thank you.
Next up, we have Chris Jacob, our county administrator.
Good morning.
Morning.
Three resolutions this morning. First resolution authorizes the advertisement for bids for the Medina County Emergency Management Agency facility. This is, as I believe you're fully aware, a reduced scope of a project. And to be determined, I guess I'm still waiting to receive the most recent revisions from the architect. But as soon as I do, I'll certainly communicate that to you. And then we would move forward, assuming the estimate is in line with the available resources with that bidding process. The second resolution approves a lease agreement with the University of Akron for classroom and meeting space at the university's Lafayette Township Building. This is a lease that would begin November 1st of this year, terminate October 31st of 2024. There is an annual lease payment amount required corresponding to the county's use of this space, designated space at that university center, of $25,000. And third and final resolution this morning authorizes a change order for the Medina County Office for Older Adults Kitchen Renovation Project. This is a change order in the amount of $41,082.38, increases the value of the contract, current value, to $448,911.88, and is for additional demolition, electrical, and plumbing work that was uncovered once the work began and the bid had been awarded.
Move to approve the three resolutions.
Second.
Okay, so we're going to go into discussion on this, on one of them, on the lease with the University of Akron. We have Rebecca here from the sheriff's office. Do you want to come up and say a few words on what the sheriff will be using these rooms for?
Yes, we appreciate this very much. We'll be using this to host countywide trainings, law enforcement-focused. We already have several in the works. We already did a dispatch training there. It's beautiful facilities. They've given us two rooms with the ability to use a third room several times throughout the year that can host even more. We can also do internal training, defensive tactics. They've cleared out a room for us to be able to have those trainings there as well. So we're very appreciative of that and know that that will be put to good use.
Thank you so much for coming, Rebecca. Okay, any other discussions?
Yeah, I was just going to say, it seems like, yeah, three's the magic number for us today. I hope also the third times the charm for the EMA bid. This is the third time.
Yes.
And I know that we need to expedite this as quickly as possible so that we can spend that down, have that project completed by the time the grant ends.
Yep, and we, this is, we're moving quickly relative to the meeting schedule of the EMA Executive Committee because we just met last week.
Right.
And obviously, the steps that we need to take with the architect to get a revised plan together, they were fairly confident they could get it to us in good enough time to-
Mid-November.
Yeah, that we'll be right up against the deadline, but hopefully enough time to get the project rolling and started so the funds can be expended by our summer deadline.
Right, yes. Agreed.
Yeah, I'd also like to say, I think one of the great things we do in Medina is collaboration with other entities. So it is really nice to enter into a collaboration with the University of Akron.
Indeed.
Yeah, we're very excited about it, so thank you. Okay, roll.
Hambley?
Yes.
Harrison?
Yes.
Sweattick?
Yes, thank you, Chris.
Thank you.
Okay, next up, we have Steve Sikora from Job and Family Services.
Happy Halloween, Commissioner.
Hello.
It's an exciting day. I just have two resolutions for you, so.
Okay.
Drum up another one for us?
Yeah, I'll go, Graham.
You can use the commissioner one.
For, one is a resolution authorizing an agreement with RF Works for wireless as a service for Medina County Job and Family Services. The second is a resolution authorizing an agreement with Lamar for fraud cost billboard advertising for Medina County Job and Family Services.
Move to approve both resolutions.
Second.
Discussion, roll.
Hambley?
Yes.
Harrison?
Yes.
Sweattick?
Yes.
Thank you, Steve.
Thank you so much.
Okay, we do have one commissioner resolution approving the reappointment of the B apiary inspector for the county of Medina for 2024, and that is Michael Moan.
I will move to approve.
Second.
Discussion?
All indications are that we appointed him earlier this year, and things are going well.
Good.
I think we, we used up the allocation we had this year, so the allocation was up by another $1,000 for next year, so.
We have a lot of Bs.
I think it keeps our, it keeps our colonies healthy, which we're all, it benefits all of us.
Indeed.
Okay, roll. Hambley?
Yes.
Harrison?
Yes.
Sweattick? Yes. Okay, do we have any public comment? Most of the public has left. Okay. We will move on into discussion sessions. Steve, do you have anything?
I just noted Noah Akon moved their climate action workshops to the end of November, it looks like.
Yes.
And I think we've had some discussions as to appointing somebody to represent the board at that. As I understand, they, only one member from Medina County can attend, whether it's the member or the alternate. They both can't attend at the same time.
Right, I think all of our board representatives can attend or send their alternate.
Right, the commissioners only have one.
Right, exactly.
So the board of commissioners can only have one. So basically, they're limited to the members or their alternates.
But not both simultaneously.
Not both simultaneously, which I thought was kind of interesting.
Well, and because the meeting starts on a Tuesday.
Right.
I.
It's going to conflict with a lot of our duties here.
I could see and envision a scenario where it's maybe beneficial to have somebody there for both days, you know, the same person there for both days.
Right.
But obviously, the two of us who are currently appointed have a conflict on Tuesday that would keep us away, so.
And that's why I've asked for an executive session to consider who we might be appointing to represent the board.
And by the way, also thank you to you, because I think it was your email that helped get the meeting changed in the first place, because originally it was scheduled for next week. We received notice a week ago today that the.
They wanted to do it on Election Day and the day after.
Yeah.
And it's all local government people. It was, they, according to the email, they scheduled it based on the availability of the consultant without considering the availability of the members.
Right.
So I just reminded them that the members are important for them to be there as well, so I think.
Theoretically, the members have a role to play in that process.
I find it interesting that, I find it interesting in a two-day meeting that they only want one voice from Medina County.
No, it is from the commissioners, because the other three board seats would be represented there too, but yeah.
And I guess to make it clear, and part of the public record, this is a public meeting.
Right.
Oh, okay, so others could go.
It is a majority of that board. They are a public organization under the Ohio Vice Code, and therefore obligated to publicize it, which we are going to do, as well as make it open to the general public. So the public can't participate necessarily, but at least the public can observe.
Well, and I think that's all, which is a benefit to having a little bit more lead time before the meeting actually takes place, so all is appropriate.
But that was the only item I have.
I was going to mention that, if it didn't get brought up, and then I also, we talked about EMA already. The other update I have is that we did do a walkthrough with some representatives of the Law Library last week at the potential space over at 72 Public Square. There were some questions about, there's adjacent unfinished space and whether or not that could be made available. So I think there's some ongoing conversations to be had about the potential there. There was also, my perception was, there may or may not be a consensus in terms of whether it's better to go there with 24-hour access or stay where they are without it. Obviously, there's also the issue of the temporary relocation. So I think those, what, is that three items? Those three items warrant further discussion. So I've invited representatives of the Law Library Resources Board and the association to come to our meeting on November 14th. And we'll be able to kind of, what I would hope is that we leave with some kind of a plan of action. We don't have a real deadline for rolling this out, because it's kind of dependent upon when the city construction begins. But the more of these things we can resolve now, so we have the plan, and we know what the plan is, and everybody can work towards that, the kind of the better it is for purposes of the city making, making their plans. So that's what I'm working towards, is having some kind of resolution to that here in the next few weeks.
Got it. Anything else?
Not for me.
Jeremy, do you have something?
Yeah, just a couple of things here. The first, certifications for our unpaid utility bills. Currently, we've been working on doing those twice a year. The thought was if we can move that to three times a year, that would eliminate our need to perform monthly shut-offs for water for non-paid bills. If we can certify those every four months, that, that would give us two regular bills, two delinquent bills, and at that point, any unpaid balance exceeding $100 would then just be certified to the taxes. Been working with the auditor and treasurer, and it looks like we have a process laid out. The idea was to meet maybe in early December with those two departments to then determine what, what, what four months, or I'm sorry, what three months did we want to do in 2024? Just wanted to make sure that before we go down that step, that had approval from the commissioners to do that, as you would have to approve resolution for any type of certifications.
Yes.
That makes sense.
Okay, perfect. And then the second item here, over at the Hinkley Wastewater Treatment Plant, they have a, an electrical, what they call, switchgear. The power comes into the plant, goes into this device, the switchgear. There's an automatic transfer switch there that, in the event of a power outage, it flips it over to the generator. That switchgear is original to the 1976 plant, and basically, parts to find to replace it are basically nonexistent. So if something happens to the switchgear, we're in trouble. So the idea would be able to go out for design services. We're going to have to pull a consultant in to help us design a new electrical switchgear. And then there are what they call eight motor control centers. Think of it as almost an electric panel, right? For each one of the different buildings, there's eight of them. Four are original to the 1976. Two were replaced in the 1996 expansion. Those eight parts are also very difficult to find, so just wanted to get approval, just wanted to present resolution next week to work on getting design services to advertise, to get that, to get that project moving, so. If you had any questions on that or anything, so, other than that, I think that's all I had. All right, perfect. Thank you.
Thanks.
Chris, did you have anything more? Rebecca, John, Steve, Stan, I know you don't. Okay.
Okay, I would like to make a motion that we go into executive session to consider the appointment of a public official.
Second.
Roll. Hambley?
Yes.
Harrison?
Yes.
Sweattick? Thank you, everyone. See you next week.
Thank you.